Oh, I was just curious, like, I, because they had it on. This place is a good time.
Yes, it is. I think it's actually, it's actually, it's just a small, it's a little bit, it's, it's towards.
Oh, that's what I thought. Should we have, should we have a meeting?
Mm-hmm, it's still going on.
Yeah.
Did you do see?
Good, good. Okay, so it's your topic there? What are the recommendations?
Eight twelve is recommended by some.
A lot of them.
And I asked him why wouldn't we go closer?
Close to others?
Yeah.
But is this just total in that amount of total?
Yeah, additional. Thirty-five, four, eleven, thirty.
Thirty-eight?
Yeah.
Um, yeah, that's like, maybe, maybe. How does this, you're a new woman, it's not legal. Can you, if they say eight, how come it's not on here?
Well, I think, I think Paul's gonna be trying to.
Okay. And he didn't put anything on it, he didn't shoot that.
No, he only says, it's a big, some of those, but I can't, I can't, I can't see it.
Just, I always have these things. I'm sure you, if that's the call. Um, did the other one say, I didn't really go up because of that?
He was arguing.
Eight, so it's all still. See if that's what she needed, if that's what I needed, yes. If, excellent, awesome, thank you.
I'll go ahead and call the meeting in order, we'll start with the Fudge of Allegiance.
Fudge of Allegiance. The United States of America, two hundred and fifty-sixty, stands, foundation, under, universal, with liberty and justice.
Here are the minutes from the last meeting, everybody have a chance to look at it?
Just, um, just a little bit of spelling, page two, under Commissioner Reese's beautification, change brand to grant. So it says, received a grant from T C E, this is a grant form. Thank you. Uh-huh.
And true on the, on the right implement, on the minutes here about making this as personal driveway, not sure where that came from in the discussion. And then also they're not saying anything about the manhole cost estimate, I thought there was a manhole cost estimate.
So have those added in?
Well, I'm just saying, I don't, I don't really know if they need to be, what they need to be in there, I guess.
Okay, hold on, let me see where I need.
Because I, because there was cost there, so unless you change it.
Okay, here I see where she put it, okay. Okay.
I'm not sure where we decided that this, making this a personal driveway, I don't know if that was ever officially.
Okay, so line through. Page three? Yep. Their old business? Okay. Well, it's two and three, or cross out.
Well, I, I don't know what we decided on, I just want, I just wanted to clarify to make sure that everybody's on page and what was actually. What was actually said first.
Okay, so what, just to clarify, what would you like me to do on this call?
Well, I think we, I think we just need to clarify what was, what was done there, we can't clarify it.
Okay, so do you, um, do you want to listen to the minute here, the recording, or how, what would be recommendations for clarifying?
That'd probably be the best, I'd have to just break that as words pronounced.
So then table the minutes until you and I can do the recording?
Yeah, just, just to clarify, yeah, if that's okay with everybody. This is pretty important, this little bit, this is a pretty important subject, as you know, we spent a lot of time talking about it, so I'd rather be sure that we have that a hundred percent accurate, and not just kind of broad, so.
Okay.
So we'll table those, the minutes till the next meeting.
I think they mentioned that there's a manhole cost.
And I just want, just wanted to clarify, make sure, those are what we're doing, that we want to make sure we have, have it right.
Okay, we'll go on to the bills, anybody have a chance to look at the bills?
Nicole makes the motion to approve the bills.
Nicole makes the motion to approve bills, is there a second?
I'm certain.
Seconded by, John, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Delinquent bill list.
Not sure it is.
Uh, motion to approve the, shut off?
Make the motion to approve the shut off.
Paul makes the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Nicole, any other discussion? John?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Any questions for the, motion carries. Financials, Casey will get us those next meeting, should be quite getting done. Next item, I'll do commissioners' reports, we'll start with Nicole tonight.
Oh, oh, um, nothing is needing for airport. But I was digging in to a grease container for, back behind my business, and after some research, I found out that there's other towns that have grease recycling containers for their town. And so I had reached out to Jason to ask if I could look a little bit more into this, since it's kind of on the recycling side, but the reason why is because through here, um, we know grease can, over time, kind of, um, not let the drains of our, you know, sewer system and stuff drain very well, um, or the waters. Anyway, um, I looked into this, and Midwest Grease actually takes and recycles the grease, um, so this would be household cooking oil grease. Uh, it comes in a two hundred or three hundred gallon tank, but they prefer a three hundred gallon. And so it would be located at Public Works, but then it would be for the whole community to use, so like, you can't use, obviously, regular car oil, but it would be somewhere where you could put specifically house oil or, um, our grease from our businesses, which I thought was a pretty cool thing for the community, it doesn't cost the city anything. Um, they actually use the grease, um, for their company, um, so it's more of a benefit to them. Um, if you guys are interested in it, I just let them know that I would have Casey, um, kind of, you know, talk with Public Works, see if that works or not, if there's a space over there. What, you know, any additional feedback or questions or comments, whether it's a good idea, a bad idea, um.
What kind of bearings?
He said it's like a three hundred gallon tank, so it'd be like those, I'm assuming like the big black tanks we have, you know, sitting out there, but, um, I know that, um, like, Grand Forks recycles theirs, and I didn't know you could do that, so, um, they are happy to bring a tank and dump it when it's full, um, just as long as we know that we have to make sure that it's just used cooking oil. Um, but I was thinking infrastructureally wise, that that was a good benefit for, you know, our water, sewer type of stuff, and infrastructure for future, so it doesn't flood the drains, but, I don't know, maybe households.
So like, if your business was, you know, doing.
Um, I use one of the, the neighbor's grease bins. And that's how I kind of got into it, because I was like, well. Yeah, I mean, if you keep adding more grease bins to the businesses, or simplify it to one word, use file. So, thoughts on checking into that a little bit more, or?
I think it sounds like a good idea. Paul, have a look.
John, no problem, okay. Thank you. I will give you that contact info.
Okay, Paul?
I don't have a lot, I just, I did go down to the, those River Energy, uh, Services Convention last week, everywhere it was, and got a lot of, got a good contacts, good information down there, it's always a good, it's always a good convention, so, uh, anybody's interested in wanting to go next year, let us know, especially, you know, Ed Roy or somebody in the city, I know that he's been there before, Casey, so it's a lot, a lot of good, a lot of good, it's, it's a busy, it's a busy two days. Uh, you don't get a lot of time to just sit around, uh, unless you skip, unless you skip classes, I believe you can sit around, but, but if you attend what's available, you'll get there, so I always enjoy that. There are, there are supplier, they do a great job, uh, they're, they're gonna, they have sep- several things that they can do, programs that they can run, to help us, whether it be, uh, team building, whether it be strategic planning, it's just a multitude of things that they, that they have available, that I'm gonna look more into, I'd like to see us do a few more of those projects, and they're always very reasonable priced, for, for manholes. And, uh, so on electrical side, that's what I got there, economic development, uh, just came from that meeting, that's my little kind of run of late, uh, big top topic there was updating the website for the Hillsborough Development, so, that was the main, yeah, cut another presentation, and, uh, so they're really looking at updating website, uh, they've, they've been talking about a lot of things, so, so that's good, moving forward on that side of it. And, uh, and that, I think that's, that's all I really got, so.
Is that the?
Beautification, we got beautification, we put out the planters, like flowers got planted, so, so we're gonna keep trucking away on that, so, it's like all the trees, or at least most of them, it's like they survived the winter that we planned last fall, so, getting a little nervous, but, uh, you know, we are told that it'll be fine, and I guess the powers in D U can do a lot of that, so. You got something, Nicole?
I was just gonna ask the website, that's A G D C website?
Yeah, that's the Grove Hills.
The Grove.
Grove, it's, it's kind of tied with a lot of information, uh, J R puts a lot of stuff on it from the Business Association, it's kind of cooperative type thing between the Business Association and A G D, and Hillsborough Development, so they kind of share content and information, and, uh, it just, we had the idea shop, was doing the updating on it, and of course they're gone, so we need, so it needs to be updated, but, uh, there's some times that are, it just, just needs a good, you know, it did sound like they were gonna completely get rid of it, and overall, like, it sounds like they were more on the lines of, uh, let's just, just say update it and then see where we're at from there, and, uh, and they're also talking about a lot of social, you know, marketing, and, uh, they're just, they're being, you know, more targeted marketing for the areas that we need, like, especially River Walk, for building and developing out there, they want to target more for that specific project, and of course, with businesses that, uh, making buildings or whatever, businesses that need, uh, could use some, you know, a little push out here to get more information out that's available, uh, if they're, they're really, get there, they also had two potential members that came in in the future when, uh, people are timing out, so we're trying to, trying to be prepared for the future, and not, you know, we're looking for people to recruit in there when the time comes. It, uh, it's looking good, we're getting on things, so, I'm glad, I'm glad to see that, so.
Okay.
You know, that's all I have.
Okay. John?
I don't have a lot, uh, Jay said they're gonna start doing some of the, uh, current, uh, growth and everything, the, uh, the material that we imported last year, um, ordered one to be redone by oil, but, and then, uh, he said they're just getting the equipment fixed up, ready for the summer, this, something, so, go ahead.
On, 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 on the grounds, one of the things that they talked about with economic development was they're gonna, because they're gonna kind of preview Prairie Walk, or River Walk, are you, you have a plan to kind of get that green out there, or cleaned up, uh, because then we have, um, sprinklers, things like that, uh, that we can be, you know?
Yeah.
Kind of concentrate on that when we get our summer out, make sure that's trimmed up, cleaned up, and, uh, trees that are, trees that are dying, you probably should think about getting them replaced, or making a plan to get them replaced. Uh, it's, it's been a huge, uh, a huge thing out there, it's, you know, complaints of past years.
Yeah, I should mention that, I did get in contact with John Bowery, he supposedly sent me this information, this mulch and this stone part of it, and, and, like, having got, he said he emailed this from Greenways, he emailed it, I don't know if you guys seen anything?
I've got it. I don't know if you went to the, uh, he put dot com, that's probably why. Yeah, he put dot com at the end of the email.
Okay, but he sent me an email, there's a couple of, one, he sent it to me.
But I, I also think he put that kind of as part, he's got, put some shit out there, and trying to, and for a couple reasons, one is, we want to do everything we can do to get that going out there, because we don't want that going back to the city, obviously, so if there's any little bit that we can do to make sure that things are, you know, looking good out there, presentable, I think, yeah.
So the bid was irrigation startup, irrigation fix, replace twelve trees, get through work, material, lighting system fix of existing, and then decorative rock installation, oh, excuse me, not the decorative rock, just the lighting materials, get through work. It's twenty-one thousand five hundred and eighteen, if we are going to change the rock to rock, instead of mulch, it's sixty-four thousand eight hundred and seventy additional, and if we reapply mulch, it's eighteen thousand nine hundred and forty. I did it.
Okay.
So, I just got this at five o'clock, so.
So we, we can read that over and have any agenda?
Yep.
Anything else, John?
I wanted, uh, sorry, uh, Jay is looking into some of this, but, uh, pardon.
Pool is repainted, we're hopefully get that other running by the first of June, if we can get everything lined up. We're just waiting on a few things, it's also not the warmest, so, but they did get it painted during the hottest parts, so I think it should be cured and done. Uh, the burl is coming along, he's working on the ear, so, we're getting closer, I don't know if it'll make it for Hillsborough Days, but it's coming closer. Uh, we had some extra trees through that grant, I think there's about twelve or thirteen that are left, and the school's gonna put somewhere out there properties, on the boulevards. So we were able to get those all in, and that's all I have for tonight. Zach, do you have anything for today? Okay, J R?
Nothing for me.
Casey?
Um, budget twenty twenty-six will be starting in June, um, if anybody has any requests, um, please get them in by middle of July, preferably, um, and then, just to give everybody a heads up, um, due to the legislative decision, um, local, uh, uh, taxing districts across the state are capped and there's an increase for their tax levies, so, just gonna need that heads up, not a, it, it's a little different than what, um, what's been available in the past, so.
Give me the information.
We'll be doing training in June, yep, so, and I, I'm signed up to, to go, go, and that's all that I got right now.
I think we have Andrew from Sherpasaw Street City here in Connecticut, and then we'll go into old business, and start with writing implement, John?
So, Tim sent over this to, uh, to have, you know, to Casey the other day, uh, and I talked to Casey, I guess I haven't talked to her yet, um, the city liability issue that's mentioned in the letter. You have a chance? Uh, Tim phoned me again today, he said there is an incident where someone could have injured themselves, that's the way, somebody could have injured themselves, and he said that.
Last week, I, the guy who parked his car there got out, stepped over the edge, and he started stumbling, I'm not sure he wanted to ride out in front of the traffic. If he did that, what would happen? Why would be here? You know, who's even the school, you, me, guys, you know, because if someone gets killed, you know, crippled, whatever, but the great, the highlight of it is, he pumps all down, down the truck, that's the end of it. But how do you put price on someone's life or, you know, and being forty years in the country of war, every meeting we went to, that's what they, um, we know there's an obstacle there, something that's gonna create a hazard, take care of it, otherwise you are in life, is what they told us, and why would it be any different for the same one? We're both, we're both empty dealing, shouldn't be any different. In a driveway, I couldn't care less, I can get along without it, I don't want to see someone be killed or hurt, but it don't seem like that's hidden through you, Pete, the way it looks to me, I don't know.
Well, can I?
Would it want to be one of your kids riding a bike and try and go up that ramp and fall out in traffic?
The way I see it, is if you go up all the way down, up and down two hundred?
Pardon me?
There's a lot of driveways?
Yeah.
That have no curves along there.
But this one place, I don't know, it may be three, four foot long, you know, thirteen foot up. It don't make a difference how long that driveway is, if they step in that one spot, fall out in traffic, that's the issue. If you got a big hole in the road that's three foot big, and you don't fix that, if someone runs into it, no matter if you got the whole road, what's the difference? You know, it's just.
I guess from my perspective.
I got curbs some of the ways, and then I got a tow truck just going up on the door, but.
Mm-hmm. Well, and, and why would a car park in that one spot, if it's been an issue for so long, why would a car park in that spot when they have all that?
They don't see it, they drive up, they don't see it.
He was washing his car.
Like that, and don't see it, they get out, walk around their vehicle, all of a sudden, there you are.
Because I've never seen a car parked there before.
The only other way to cancel it all out, I suppose, I don't know, I stacked that little steel guy there to keep people out of there, but then they had to move it up, so they moved that back to the deal, this guy drives up, turn their, and I think the third one, no deck is coming around our building from the backside, and tried to drive over that, their wheel dropped down in there, that high center vehicle, wheels on the other side come up, it's high out the ground, turn their flip there. And this winter, when we're pushing snow, preparing snow off, mic was going on, and all of a sudden the payloaders did down, that wheel went in there, the other side come up, the bucket wouldn't have been down, he would have moved it. So something has to be done with the liability issue here. I worked with the Lincolnman dad out that helped, you know, get it all done, I said I'd throw in two thousand dollars of my own money to fix what's been screwed up for how many years, and it's just getting too close to someone getting hurt, something has to get done.
J R?
And I didn't engineer it, I didn't pour it, I didn't put it in there, and if you go back to this old concrete, I keep hearing about, that is a separate issue from this, why would I get paid for new concrete poured over your, sponsor?
I think we understand that it's a separate thing, what they pay for is they had shipped into your driveway when they poured that slab, and we understand that part, the part I'm not understanding is that, you signed a piece of paper saying, yes, you did ship into my driveway up here, and I'm gonna get paid for it, but this whole slope hasn't been an issue for fifteen years, and that's where I'm not understanding, where the big gap of fifteen years comes in, and have you called the state, because they're the ones who put that in, those are what in.
I've been on there, I've been talking to all the guys on the board, they never bring it up here, this was the first time I've ever gotten on the, at the end of the sheet, you look at that picture that they were in that field, that was two thou, or twenty-one, that picture was taken, so that's mid way in between, so I have been working on this, but no one goes doing anything. Someone's gotta be big enough to stand up and say, let's get this done.
J R? According to Central Court forty thirty-two. The boulevard is the ownership of the prop, the Jason Crowery order, correct?
Give me a second. But, I believe I'm gonna answer you the same way, yes, this must be, if it's not the sidewalk, it's not the boulevard, usually goes to Jason landlord.
So if Tim wants.
Because I can't tell if it's, is it city owned property, or is it, is it owner owned property?
It doesn't seem to be city owned, it seems to be boulevard?
Correct.
Which, if improvements are done, the city can take that on and do it, but it would be special assessed to the property owner, in order for us to do it?
Correct. Yes, it's the same as the sidewalk, so it's there.
So if you guys want to get it done and fixed, we can, and then a special assessor.
You hear that, Tim?
I can't hear.
Okay, so what Levi is saying is you have the city do it, it's gonna be turned into a special assessment, so it's all gonna go back.
Oh, it would be a special assessment.
What's that?
I would have turned into that, on your property, your right away.
It's on easement, but it's on your property.
But I never put it there, but you gotta put it there.
It's kind of like all the cables, like the hundred nine property, if I had a house, I didn't put it there, but I have to stay with them.
You know, I already paid over twenty-some thousand dollars to get that street lightened, through special assessments and easements and all this other crap, why should I put another twelve thousand dollars into a mistake that was made?
But you're blaming the wrong person, Tim.
Pardon me?
You're blaming the wrong people.
Well, then, you guys should go out to the correct.
And I had a conversation with D O T today, and his first thing he said was seventeen years or fifteen years.
Why is there statute of limitation on a hazard, on a liability, I don't think there is, if someone gets hurt, if I got something set up there for many years, someone runs into it, I'm still liable.
But D O T is the one that engineered it, D O T is the one that put the property in.
I.
D O T, North Dakota Department of Transportation, was the entity that engineered the whole road right away, except for the water and sewer that was added in, that was done by the city and engineered by A two S, the rest was engineered by D O T.
It is far as sort of that it is, correct? That's what's under there.
But the concrete work was done by D O T, not by City of Hillsborough.
Okay, I don't, you gotta run manhole, you need to stand up and correct that issue here.
So the, the problem is, Tim, is not that I'm not saying I wouldn't do it for you, I would if I could, I can't, legally, I can't do it according to North Dakota Century Code, it is not, because if we do this, if we put in your driveway, because it is.
My driveway? What don't you understand about that, it's not my driveway, yours, or your manhole.
That's, it is our manhole, based on the easement, it is no different than if we run a power line underneath, did you not say that it was a, uh, basement that was going in for electrical on your property? Did you say that, Tim?
Uh.
That the basement going in where we're putting, burying. That the basement going in where we're putting, burying the electrical, was that going in on your property?
Electrical?
Yes.
You have already buried some in there.
And is it on your property?
Some of it is, it's way over this way, yes.
And that is the same spot, which is the easement, it is no different than a-
I've never seen an easement, can you produce one for me?
We would have to go back and grab it, but I'm sure it is, it is there.
I've been there for many times, but I have not got it. I think you looked for it and said you couldn't find it, or someone maybe asked you to.
Okay, it wasn't named.
We'd have to go to the court, courthouse and dig, correct, JR, to find the easement, so.
If you look in the abstract, it could be in the city plat, it's all nothing.
DOT plans show a ten foot right of way.
But if I go to the courthouse, they won't give it to me, I've tried once before, and they say, because if they give us the wrong information, I could sue them, I have to get a lawyer to do that. That's what they told me after.
Would you guys like JR to get the actual easement?
Wait, seeing if it's a plat or if it's on a DOT plat, I'm not sure it'd make a difference in this case. It still is what it is, is what I'm getting at.
Right, it's still an easement or right of way, which is owned by the adjacent property owner.
I've talked to the ex-mayors and everything else, and everyone says, why don't they take care of it? I've talked to other cities, and they say the same things, and I'm like, wait a minute. So I don't know why you're different than other cities.
But it's, according to North Dakota Century Court, you want us to break the law? Which which then, Tim, will, it'll get it to the point where now the city is going to have to start putting in other people's driveways. And that could cost the city a ton of money.
We'll find out.
My- I look at this from a whole different angle, and with all respect to JR and to Levi, I understand that part of it. But we do, but we do live in a small community of Hillsborough. We do have a businessman that has been here for probably forty years. He's been very gracious throughout all these years to work on our equipment, to help us out in a pinch, to have people come up during after hours, do things, he's a very, he's valuable to our community, he's valuable to our city. And I think that, I think that was, is not done in a safe manner. I do, I do think that I would, I could look at, a judge could look at that and say that that is a safe, that was not done the way it was supposed to be done, legally, potentially, in the wrong situation, and I know, and JR may disagree with me, and I respect that. But I I could see him saying, if this was an issue, and it's been an issue for fifteen years, and City of Hillsborough, you've been made aware of this, and when he asks you to correct it, I I could see that we potentially could have some, you know, responsibility there, because it was not fixed right of way. And if there is certain slope guidelines that are supposed to be on on something like that, I don't know. But if there is a grade that it's supposed to be, and it's not at that grade, and it was put in there for whatever reason, I feel that, I feel that was wrong on our part, whoever did it, I don't really care who did it. But I just think we owe this to this gentleman who's been here and he's, you know, he's done a lot for the community. He had, you know, he's, he's, the son, you know, was starting out in front of his building, had an insurance company that started out in front of his building, that now has built a million dollar, eight hundred thousand dollar, whatever, building out there. I think this is a small price that we paid, and I understand everything you're saying, JR and Levi, but I do think that there, we have money left over from that project. I think that we, I think, I think as this goes, I think this is something that we should do in the standpoint of it's neighborly. And it's just, I think it's, it's going to put this to rest. I just think it's, it's, it's something that we should do, and I've, I've talked to, since last meeting, I've talked to several people, and and they, and that's how I come up with that, because people, that's how a lot of people that I've talked to in the community do feel. Is yes, they understand the situation and how it could be, but they also look at it in the standpoint that, you know, this is something that was just, for whatever reason, didn't get handled properly in the beginning, and now it's stuck on us, and we're the bad guy because we're the one that's dealing with it right now. But I just, I just think if there's money in that fund, it's not really earmarked or anything else, I think that we should, we should do something with that to uh to help with this situation. Because I, I don't know how many have been there, it's bad. I've seen, it's, you do, you would not want to drive, if you drove, drove your car off, and oh, if you drove your car off that-
I have. I've driven my motorcycle off of it, I've bike ridden off of it. My issue is I have a huge concrete gap where you can walk down right in front of my store and trip and fall right into the blander. But if I so choose to fix that, that's way to be on me. And that's a liability hazard, but I'm, I'm just not connecting the dots here because it's, it's the length of time, and I get that. But I feel like if we do this for him, what about all the other staples in the community? What about everybody else that puts in spirit? Do we do this for everybody? That's just my question, that's just my concern, because it can come back to this.
And I understand that concern, but I also think this is, how many people, I think, how many people out there have this concern that have been, bringing up this concern to just about every commissioner for how many years, have bringing this up? I I couldn't, I couldn't give you one name of one person that's had an issue that they could bring up with the city year after year after year, and not gotten any satisfaction, not even gotten to a vote or anything, and uh-
But where is, where is that information that has been brought up numerous times? Because I haven't seen anything, and this is the first time I was hearing about it this year. And I'm not saying I don't want to help.
Go ahead, Jason.
Look, Jason, I don't mean to leave you there. I, go ahead, I have a second. My question, this happened like fifteen or seventeen years ago. Why wasn't it addressed with the state fifteen, seventeen years ago?
I think you tried, didn't you?
When I talked to him today, he, he did not.
You talked to who today?
When I talked to Tim.
No, I've tried all the time, you look at the banner of that picture, they have that posted twenty, was it twenty twenty-one? I don't know where they got the pictures, but that picture, so I've been doing trying this all the time, I didn't even, it was right in the middle of this air that I was driving.
Tim, I asked you today if you have talked to the state, and you told me you didn't.
I guess I didn't understand you, I'm hired here, so I probably didn't understand you. But I've been trying to get this rectified ever since started.
You have a general timeline of what year you started?
That's the age. That's the time of age when the construction stuff started, and there- I don't even remember who was mayor when it got done, Mark was, or that whole Poligan guy was, or who, but. And Levi sent a guy over to check the grade, I shouldn't say Paul. And that guy said, yes, this is way out of compliance, this is not in compliance. And I was coming from here, I believe it was then from the engineer, but he had, and Levi's going to send him over, he told me. It is way out of compliance.
Any other comments?
Tim, are you, well, you-
Go ahead, Jason.
Tim, are you talking about Steve?
Talking about what?
Steve the engineer.
Steve Swanson from AE two S.
The engineer from AE two S, is that the gentleman, do you know?
Probably not.
Levi sent him over, he should know we've sent him.
I didn't send anybody over.
Who was over there with Jay, do you remember that?
No, this guy comes by himself. Before thirty-five o'clock at night. Put his deal on, he says this is way out of compliance.
JR. Could we, that would not put us into issue with Century Code?
Mark Porsett said that one of the engineers you have now was with advanced engineering or something else, and he worked on this project. And he said he's been up for many times, work abbreviated.
That is true, Tim, he worked on the water and sewer portion of it, but I believe it was JLK that did the, the actual design work of the concrete.
I'm saying this for a first project.
Could we give, similar to demolition grants, a one-time grant for improvement-type project? Could that be done? And give, once paid, or once finished and completed, and within compliance, given X amount of dollars?
I want to say yes, I'd rather look into it before saying that firmly. Knowing why we're doing it is why I hesitate.
Okay.
JR.
Yes.
So my understanding from our discussion earlier is if this was a liability issue, the state designed and did everything, and I'm sorry, I'm probably late getting in, but the state designed and decided everything, and they did it, so it's a state property.
Correct, if it comes down to a design flaw, look at the state, is, is they're the ones who should have been liable for it, for fixing it.
Correct, so I believe our next, if next step should be to talk to the state.
Why should I talk to the state? That should be your job, the city government and the state. Name the bill that's talking to the state is my focus. I've had that answer up in the country, I've trained for this stuff, talk to the state. You gotta have a city or something like that, and go talk to the state.
I believe Nicole, you have reached out to the state, have you not?
I did. I'd have to reach out to him again, though, because the guy was on vacation.
So, John, did you ever reach out to Aaron?
I haven't, I guess, you know.
Okay, but you do have his contact.
Want to reach out to him again?
Sure. But if we set the grant as leftover funds from the, from that project could be used for any improvements along that right of way? Say max of ten thousand, and then other improvements could be used for other projects along that corridor? Would that be a better option?
I like that idea, more so than we can, so you can have gift bonds, but yes, there are grants we can do for infrastructure approvals, as we've already done.
Right, so you could do an infrastructure improvements for it, and we specify it being that it was, those funds were along there, so anybody that wanted to improve their infrastructure along that right of way could apply for it, and then the city could then grant funds based on that.
I like that idea. It stays with that project.
Well, it'd still have to come out of the general, it'd have to go into the general fund, and then can be used for that, but that money can be set aside for those, so then it would be more than just that project. Potentially, if that's what you guys wanted to do. John, thoughts?
Sounds like it's going to keep us out of hazards, you know, obviously we're giving people opportunity along the corridor, if there's any, any issue they have. Should also apply for it, now, is there cap funds, or how many we actually want to receive?
You'd cap it at whatever funds are left.
Good. Do you know what that is, Casey?
I gotta double check Sarah's previous deposit, she might not actually do one of them right, I didn't tell you this week, though.
Nicole, thoughts?
I mean, as long as it keeps us away from, you know, non-compliance, that was my only concern, is the non-compliance, because I don't want to go against anything that's in ordinance or code.
Jason, thoughts?
I guess my question would be towards JR is, we run out of funds, what are we looking at?
It's a very good question, to be in the same place if there's other issues that happens on this project. It depends on how many funds-
That would be my concern, is if we have funds, and people request more money than we have, how do we handle them equally?
But wouldn't it be a grant request per se? They would have to apply, you have to prove it?
Correct.
And we could say that it's limited to X amount of dollars, we would never go over that amount?
Right, the amount would be whatever, at most, whatever was left over, I'd say for that fund.
Right.
Does this create any issues with our three, new three percent cap?
And this is all money that will probably eventually be transferred into general fund anyway at some point, when that, when that project is closed, or what does that might grow?
You have one that's on the channel?
So basically, it runs out, when it runs out, it runs out.
Well, it's, we're done, we've paid off all of the barns, we've paid everything off, so whatever is left in there is-
But this was like some kind of continual thing, so.
No, the residual, you guys paid off the loan for that project last year, and then the residual is just from people paying their taxes late.
Gotcha.
Yep.
So are we setting up residents now, so we don't have to face issues of liability? I can put anything up there, someone invented, after so long, I don't have to be liable? That's what it looks like you're doing.
Have you heard over this kid on saying here, did you, were you able to hear Levi, what he's, what this, were you able to hear Levi, what he was talking about?
Hear him.
Okay, so what he, what he's talking about doing is taking the funds, and you correct me, Levi, if I'm wrong, the funds that are left over from that project, and creating a grant program that we now could, you could apply for that money, that ninety-five hundred dollars, through that grant, and it would be for improvements along that corridor. Of the people that may hate yourself that have had issues, that that they felt were created by that project, we would have that money available until it's gone, to help fix those problems through that project. That make sense?
If you do that, it sounds good to me.
So let's clear something up, Tim, though, that I've had an issue with for a while, is that you will certainly have a problem with me. But, no, Tim, just wait. If I am so against you, so against all these things, the way you make it seem, why did I just do what I just did to make sure that you could get something? I said, just wait, Tim, till I'm done. I said, we couldn't do things legally, because that is right. I'm trying to do the legal thing and the right thing, not set precedents, but the way you have treated me and your family has treated me, has not been great.
What plan, tell me that, I'm bringing my family in this. Now, we've had our differences, Levi, but in business, everyone has to do, you know, against their customers or whatever, and then they get over it and move on. But evidently, you have not, the way it sounds to me, and what's the family, tell me who the family is?
Tim, the way that you wrote this, the way that you turned this in, seemed very centered towards me.
Well, I was just answering in the paper, you said it looked very level, compliant.
That's not what I said. That's all I am saying, Tim, you are the one that brought it up, came to a commission meeting, belittled me in the front of this commission, in front of everybody, and said that I was the worst thing that happened to town, and to leave.
Hey, I'm still go back to my family, you brought them into it, now, which ones, and what did they do to you? I'd like to know, they'll all have a talk.
Your, one of your grandkids brought this, this issue up during school.
Okay, this couldn't have nothing to do with the city then, this is something like a kids against whatever hatred, to me, or something like that.
This particular issue, saying my grandpa, why are you against my grandpa? Does that sound like something normal school reaction?
Heard this talk, and they grab their own, kids will do it.
I'm not saying that, he had to hear it somewhere.
It shouldn't be, yeah, but we should bring family into city business, that is not correct, now.
I did it.
I think the rest here, I think you will say that too, that isn't right. Bringing family into something like this that doesn't even pertain to this item.
Anything else on this issue? We'll work on this, JR, I forgot, that's Jason, your thoughts?
I guess I'd be- I guess I'd be curious to see what the money is and how we're, if we did that, how we would go about doing it fairly.
Correct.
Yep.
And that's where we'd have, we'd have to write it so that it was fair. We'd have to say that this is the cap, we'd have to say, funds are based upon this, whatever is used, applications come in, must be turned in by a certain time, similar to what we did with other beautification grants in the past, and if we want it, maybe you guys want to stick it towards businesses more so than, so you could do other areas, but the details would have to be in the grant before it goes out.
Tim, for your first is, you're wanting to get this done this summer, I'm assuming it's been ongoing, but you need to, I guess I don't know, this grant system can take this out.
Well, you could say that, we could have a gentleman's agreement that yes, if, the work could be done prior, after, if it goes through. Did you hear that, Tim?
I did.
Did you hear that?
Do the work prior? I don't know if I feel comfortable doing that, all of a sudden the money don't come through, then I'm.
I think we have to make sure the funds are there for, for, for to know that they're.
I think we need all that, it's very certain, it matters with the grants.
My question is the engineer side of things, does an engineer need to be involved again? Like, I, I don't know what the whole thing was, why it was, an engineer was involved in the first place.
Second, the engineer?
Yeah, when they redid it, what the engineer was for in the first place, I mean, do we need it this time around, drop that manhole cover down?
Because being a fault construction, you see what happens? Because, you know, they, they're supposed to be doing everything, right?
Right.
And they look at it, shoot, what's on the plan, and so when they do that storm sewer, they put the manhole in, and I imagine somebody went by and looked at it, and they look at it as, oh, this is a driveway, or anything, that means you're going to set a manhole, okay?
Right, because I don't want him to have to tear that whole thing up, and he comes to do it, and then they don't drop it low enough, or it's, you know, done whatever way, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
And he's, he's out with that again, so.
Yeah, certainly, the engineer that, whichever engineer it was, nobody would be able to answer that at this point, it's something you would.
Well, I'm just wondering, we should think ahead and maybe have, have one on board.
If I could say something quick?
Go ahead, Jason.
John, I haven't, I haven't been in, in that type of work, but respectfully, I think if we're going to be involved in it, we need to have our engineers involved in it, so that we are covered.
Yeah, and I guess that goes back to, everybody's saying the A two S was only involved in the water and.
Sewer.
Sewer.
This is the stormwater, it's the D O P, correct?
We might have been involved in that portion of it, but not all of it, I can't remember exactly.
And that could be, and that could be where some of the issue comes up, that you have too many cooks in the kitchen too, and nobody can catch it because they think somebody else can catch it.
Well, that's why I just don't, I don't want him to have to tear all that up, him to have to redo it, because again, I didn't.
Again, what I do is, I don't know why, when Tim first brought it up, that maybe in the commission, because at that point, you know, you have that five, was it, JR, if I'm correct, I'm wrong, five, seven-year window?
Six.
Yeah, six-year window where, hey, you have to go back and get it. I'm assuming the state law and D O P would back that up. Obviously, it's.
And only the project, project funds. I believe if you would have brought that up in six, within six years, they would have a record of him bringing it up.
Yeah.
It'd be like other construction, I'm sure there's retainage, other holdbacks, or before final payment was made on this project.
Do we want?
I mean, the many check marks that they do before they finish the project, that, I feel that if there was an issue and it was brought up, as soon as the project was being near completion, I think we could have resolved a lot of this at that time.
Do you want to start the process, to have A two S involved, to have Steve look at what we can lower that manhole to?
I would say so, because we don't want to have the.
Is that a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Nicole makes the motion, have Steve look at what the manhole should be set at, or can be set at, is there a second?
I'll second.
Moved by Nicole, seconded by, John, is there any other discussion? Paul? John?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Any yes for me, motion carries. Okay, anything else on that?
We can work on some other stuff.
Uh.
Get your information.
We'll get the information and then we can move forward, hopefully we could have something together for next meeting.
When he's drawn dollars long left in that fund and.
And an actual.
Kind of an idea of, oh, that's going to be his first, and who's going to work on that?
JR and I can work on that.
We'll spark from the other, I'm sure Casey will have the number by end of meeting, right?
Anything else?
Yeah, okay.
All right. Next item is the AMCO advisors.
Oh, that was Brian that brought that forward, right?
Right.
Correct. Yep.
I, I didn't see anything bad about it, I only saw positive about it. I would make the motion to approve.
Switching to them?
Switching to AMCO.
Is there a second? Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Jason, is there any other discussion? This is just a question, Casey, do you remember, did they do, like, the best thing too?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Any other discussion? Nicole?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Any yes for me, motion carries. Uh, the next item was lagoon fencing bids, you guys had a chance to look at those?
Uh, I, I did take a look, um, a little bit of information from the D M versus the other, um, the D B M was spacing was twenty feet, found out that the spacing for that fence needs to be at least twelve feet, um, so one bid included it, the other did not. Um, the D B M consulting, I believe it is, contracting LLC, um, their new bid would actually be thirty-eight thousand, it'd be an increase of three thousand because of the spacing. Still, still lower than, a little bit than the other bid, though.
I think the one issue, though, is they both came in higher than we were expecting in the budget for this year, so.
Okay, that's good to know.
Is that correct?
Yeah, it is.
What was the budget?
Oh, I don't have one.
Was it fifteen?
Uh, the, yeah, the budget for maintenance line four twenty was eighty thousand for the entire year, then there were contractor services for thirty thousand, I believe, um, when, yeah.
Jetway was, bill was thirty-five last year, and I remember that maybe the jet, or the town earlier, that's something we need to keep up on.
Right.
You said that's jetway?
Jetway's, yeah, yeah, we need jet, sewer, that's something we need to keep up on.
Yep, when, when, we, we had looked at capital, the capital projects fund as a possibility to, to help paper. So right now, there's three hundred and fifteen thousand in capital projects.
It just wasn't.
That we have, or that we have done?
That we have.
Have. Remember, that's a separate fund.
Okay, that's a separate fund, other than sewer, sewer is tight.
Yes.
Yeah.
Because I think you were, is it fifteen? I want to say it was fifteen.
To do a fence?
Yeah.
We, we just added it into line four twenty, which is.
Right.
Yeah.
I thought it was like fifteen as well.
Would, would we be able to take that out of the Prairie Dog fund?
Mm-hmm.
That would not.
Yeah, you could take it out of that one.
How much did we get on that one? Do you remember?
We, we just got a new deposit in April.
Yeah, I was curious.
I feel like you guys are.
Is it two hundred?
I think that is what you got, was about two hundred, and I think the fund itself is up in like the four hundred. So let me, let me look that up from the last report, Casey, and I'll be the answer.
I suppose you can't have half, half is for half next year, if you did.
I don't think.
Prairie Dog is currently sitting with four hundred and ninety-seven thousand fifty-four dollars and ninety cents.
So we could use that one?
Mm-hmm.
To transfer to.
Or just pay it out.
Or just pay it out of it?
Yep.
Preferably just pay it out for reporting purposes.
Unless we have something else, Diaries or that funds, I guess that would be my motion.
Okay, Jason makes a motion, and which contractor?
Uh, D M Beer, I think.
D M Beer's D B M.
D B M.
Yeah, uh.
I think we'll have to.
D B M.
D B M.
D.
Thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, D B M.
Is there a second?
I will second.
Moved by Jason, seconded by Nicole, is there any other discussion?
Who's going to be overseeing all this project? That's going to be you, Zach?
Yeah.
And you're okay?
Okay.
That's a good question, both of you, just a little bit. Testations are kind of gray in a lot of this here, so it's kind of tough to do half the depth of this here, like here, I mean, the camping itself, the gaseous layers, they're quite tough, depending on the layer you're using, the post can be different, um, the thickness of the post, baking, and just for future reference, there's kind of a little bit more of a good testation about the project, because I understand this camping project, there's a lot more activity than, there's six hundred feet of trees that have to be taken out, it's not clear what to do with the trees, and all of the type of fence that in areas where six hundred feet of trees is not easy situation, where speaking can definitely depend on what's going to hold the fence in those areas, so a lot of gray areas are a bit here, it's kind of tough on.
Is it clear enough to you, Zach, that if there's issues with the, the current one we're looking at, that they're gonna, they're not going to come back and say, well, we didn't realize this, or we didn't realize that, because that, once that contract's signed, they're gonna, they're missing something, that's their problem, not ours?
I think that kind of, that can explain the both of them, what we need, but, but we did talk about the trees, the both, both people in the, um, one option there, you know, was to protect the trees, and also to talk about possibly leaving that section over when, and to set up some, that is an option there, um, that was, that was kind of something that I didn't know, kind of like trees, young, from that, except for some of them.
Right.
But until we get a lot of stuff, kind of back, like we were, that, that's something that could alarm that, that, that.
I just, I just want to make sure that they're well aware of what's expected of them, and, and they don't come back to it and say, you know, I didn't, I didn't know this, I didn't know that, so.
I, I even know, I just know, it might not be going to be canceled, we say the wire, but.
Any other? Anything else? Nicole?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Any yes for me, motion carries. JR, I think it would be good to have a contract for this, but.
Yeah, and I think they said something too, right?
Yeah, I thought the ending, or.
Yep, and have like, make sure that, as long as you guys are okay with that, hold off ten percent until the project is completed, if they want to be.
Yeah.
Steve Love always liked, uh, fifty percent in the contract, maybe change that.
Fifty down, fifty compensation?
Ten, ten, fifty percent in the contract, and then stops, maybe five percent.
I will take a look into it to see.
Yeah, I don't think that's recorded.
I believe the bid says, or at least the invoice says, they want fifty percent down, and, and at least fifty percent pull at the end of that.
Yeah, mostly fifty to seventy-five percent down.
I'll look into that.
But I do know that on our other contracts, there was either five or ten percent that was held back. Okay, uh, we have several Hillsborough Days requests, I'll have Casey read those off. Or pull them up, because, I don't remember, did you send them to us?
Uh, it should have been.
Was it in the packet?
Should have been.
Yeah, it's.
That's what I thought, but I, well, there's those new ones that came in, that's where I seconded.
Do we have to, like, approve one by one by one?
We can approve the whole lot of requests at once, as long as that one gets out of there.
Yeah, oh, so two more requests came in, um, for A and R bars, so you guys didn't have it from, from H B A. Uh, A and R bars requesting to have the street closed down by the bar area, um, on June twentieth, um, starting at eight P M for a street dance, um, and going until at least two, possibly a little later for cleanup. Um, also, they would like the, this is outside of Hillsborough Days, um, they're requesting street closure on June seventh for a benefit, they're going to be doing a beanbag tournament for Carson Fund, um, and they would like the street closed from, starting at eleven A M until they are done with the tournament, and it's that time, I want, they can be done.
So that one would be separate with the rest. Before I forget, I just want to make you guys aware, the street closure for the EMS week was supposed to be tomorrow, they postponed that because of.
Weather?
The weather, so. So as far as Hillsborough Days, the addendum for the street dance, are we okay with that? And if so, do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve all the closures, Shane?
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Probably moved and seconded by Paul, seconded by Nicole, any other discussion? John?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Yes for me, motion carries. Do we have a motion for the street closure on June seventh? If you're not aware, that individual was, he is a plant worker out at American Crystal that got burnt.
I'll make a motion.
I'll make it.
I'll make a motion for that street closure.
I'll make a motion. Jason, you second?
Yep.
Is there any other discussion? Paul?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Any yes for me, motion carries. And then, we would have the local, or the resolution for the, is that correct, resolution for the street closures, or for the drinking, I mean?
It's a resolution.
Yeah.
Yep, I have it, it was attached.
It what? I just couldn't remember if it was resolution.
Yep, it's a resolution.
Do we have a motion to approve the Hillsborough Days revolution, resolution for public drinking during those days?
So is that something, because I remember this last time, this is something we just approve every year, it's not written in, so it's, has to be approved every year?
It's written in, but we have to approve it.
Okay. I'll make the motion to approve, I just want.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
I will second. We haven't had much issue with that, so.
Except you'll have to change it from Commissioner Sather.
I did.
Must duly seconded by Commissioner Sather.
It was always changed, I didn't know. I changed it to the line below that, that's, I will fix.
Yep.
I sent a word document, so.
Is there any other discussion on it? Is there any other discussion on it? John?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Any asks for me? Um, let's see, there was one other for Hillsborough Days, right?
Uh, you got a raffle permit application? That's attached to.
Yes, the raffle permit.
Raffle permit.
I don't use that one.
I don't think it was attached on there.
Raffle permit.
The email was.
Locally registered.
Well, there it is. For H B A. Is there a second on the?
That's the Friday, Saturday, right, raffle?
Yes.
Oh, I did see that, yeah. I'll make a motion to approve.
Is there? Paul makes a motion, Nicole seconds.
I'll second.
Is there any other discussion? Nicole?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Any asks for me? Motion carries. The only thing I didn't see is, do we have, nobody's turned in for liquid transfers?
Mm-mm.
Did we do the twenty-one, what, the twenty-one for the A and R bar?
That was in.
In the streets closing, though?
Yep, we added it into that other for Hillsborough.
Did A and R, did they didn't submit a special event permit, or the?
I haven't received any paperwork for it. They put in a verbal request today for all twenty, for, for three different events, actually, so, um.
But there is time, so.
Right, there is.
Yeah.
Someone from H B A shall be reaching out.
Well, and I assume the vets club is gonna wanna go out and carpool on it as well.
Yep, I would assume as well.
So they'll probably get them in by next meeting, I'm imagining.
Yep.
Cause they'll need, the A and R would need it for their street dance and this other, our street dance, correct?
Correct.
Correct.
Okay, um. I think that's it for the new business. Anybody else have any new business? Do we have any citizens who wanna address the permission?
Just as a note, oh, I'm sorry, just to go back to the H B A, I mean, did you approve the insurance request as well? We usually have a formal motion on that as well.
They got it out, yeah.
Okay, so one more, the formal approval of the insurance request. I assume, do you wanna do H B A and Tractor Pole, cause they usually?
Yes, yep, I'm sorry, correct, yes. Whatever we usually do is, we want it again, so.
Something to change after that?
Bill us the tractor, tractor.
Do I have a motion to approve those?
I'll make a motion.
Paul makes a motion, is there a second? Seconded by John. Any other discussion? Jason?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Any asks for me? Motion carries. If you guys wanna come up, there's a mic up here. There was.
Oh, that you used my?
Yes, if you would. If you want, if it's green, it's on, if it's not green, it's not on.
Just run away. I'm not very technically exposed. That's okay.
Hi, my name is Susan Curtis, and I currently live at seven ninety Second Street Northwest, which is out by the golf course, um, on the east side. I have a concern that we wanted to bring up, it's kind of a tricky one, I think. Um, there is a, a property owner who purchased a property recently next to us out there, which right now is an alfalfa field. Um, and we are concerned about what that property is gonna be used for. I understand, my understanding is that the building permits are actually issued by the township for out there, cause it's El Dorado Township. But I'm also understanding that the city has some jurisdiction over zoning so far out to that north side. Um, we're concerned that this will end up being a commercial, storage, um, uh, kind of a storage for tractors and different stuff, and not residential or anything. Um, we actually had a conversation with that landowner, and his verbal intentions to us were not a residential area. Shop, tractor shop, um, a small, a small tractor pole.
And tractor pole track, and a small tractor.
That, that's what he, what they told you it was?
That's what the purchaser of the land told us. That was the intention. Since then, we have researched a little farther, um, they went just to one building, and a tractor pole track, and also storage for, for track, for old tractors or whatever.
Okay.
But we're, we're looking for basics of the city, and we understand that the zoning and building commission has, the city has rights a half a mile out of the city limits. So far, we've had no luck dealing with the, the township, because the township members are good friends with this guy. The township says it's going in no matter what. I've talked to, I've talked to Baur Sock about it, he understands what's going on, and I don't think I've reached out to you guys, but I'll let her.
Anyway, our concern is the negative effect on other property owners out there, um, as far as their property values, resale values. And not only that, the actual just aesthetics out there. The golf course puts in probably an amazing amount of money to keep that golf course beautiful. Us property owners out there, keep up our properties to maintain, maintain that aesthetic. I, for one, do not wanna live next to commercial property or buildings, otherwise I would have never moved out there. And I don't think that the golf course would appreciate it either, although I don't know their perspective on that. Also, if this does turn into more than storage, and we end up with a lot of traffic out there, this is a small township road. I don't think it, it's only meant for light traffic, there are three of us, three houses that use that road, and that's it. So, there's also potential for road deterioration, and just, I'm just concerned about it, and I do not think that this property should be used for commercial, that it should remain agricultural or residential. And if, we're also looking for guidance, we wanted to start here, if we need to go to Trail County, we've already talked to the township. We're kinda looking for guidance on which way we can go with this, and we appreciate your time.
Or if, does, does the city have jurisdiction, how, my mind, are they willing to push the, or help us with the issue?
So, I can answer part of that. Yes, the city does have jurisdiction, half file outside, in the extraterritorial zones. The agreement that we had with the townships and planning and zoning was that we were, anything that showed up in the extraterritorial zones was to go to planning and zoning, the Hillsborough planning and zoning, plus go to the township board for approval. Um, we don't always see that.
But we've been told that they can rezone it without, you know, without even notifying us, and, uh, that we basically can't stop it. And that's why I got planning and zoning, Baur Sock and all, I don't wanna go legal, I don't wanna be, bring K B O Y into it. But, uh, I'm gonna tell you who it is, and Randy Clayson purchased a property. And if you guys familiar with Randy Clayson's shop is at, take a drive behind there, and look what's back there. That is gonna be in my backyard. He, Jason said, he talked to Randy, he promised it won't be a junkyard, it won't be whatever, one of our biggest, that is a lot. But we do not want a tractor pole track in our backyard. And I talked to the golf course, and they're a little up and down on it. Our neighbor, Father David Longgerner, cannot comment on it because he's a priest. He said, Frank, I moved out here, this is the most beautiful place in Hillsborough. I would really like to see four houses out there, rather than what's going out there. But he cannot see any because of his faith. And I haven't talked to Zane, Kevin Goffins on the, on the wall with, or on the edge of it, but I just don't see, a good friend of mine in another township told me these words, Frank, work hard to stop it, cause once it gets out there, you're never gonna get it out of there. And our township does have junkyard gardens. But all you guys, and I love, are take a look, and see how much stuff is out there, there's no way he's gonna keep it in the building. And so, I mean, I like the tractors, but, and I like Randy and Dar, but I don't feel that that facility needs to be in that location. He's got a commercial property, he's got two shops, he sold his business. I know the business, they, they bought the business, they did not buy his buildings. So I don't know what you guys can do, or the planning and zoning can do to help us out, but we really would like to see four houses out there, rather than commercial.
Correct me if I'm wrong, JR, doesn't matter if it's city rezoning, county rezoning, or township rezoning, all need to have hearings.
There should be a public, they should have.
There is a public hearing, so if they're saying.
Public hearing, have to be.
It has to be published within the local paper. And at.
No work should be done until your planning, zoning, and proves it, and there's a hearing, and there's.
If it's agricultural, correct, that is correct. Planning, zoning has not, to my knowledge, unless something came in today.
And I talked to Baur Sock and the doctor, secretary.
We have not seen anything for any rezoning.
Cause there are stakes.
You're not, you're not gonna, they're gonna push it through without you guys having to deal with it. Here's what I need to do for township.
So there are stakes in the field.
There are stakes in the field.
But we can't enforce any stakes.
And there's gonna be an approach put in, which you guys have, to give permission for approach already.
There should be something that comes through, through the planning and zoning.
I really wish you guys would be capable of it, cause there could be four beautiful houses out there.
Is it zone, I mean, do we know, is it zone growth right now?
It's agriculture.
Zoning.
They were gonna zone it residential, um, a county, township official said, if you put a kitchen and a bedroom in there, you can call it residential. And you must have found something where they could do it, so now it's gonna be, is a rezoned as commercial. I was told by a former township.
Right at the north, we're, we're.
We're, we're north of.
Right across from Whole Five, where Whole Five runs against that, on that road, and that field right to the east of that, it's an alfalfa field right now.
Half is owned by Randy and Dar Place, and then half is from my.
Well, I don't think there's much that the commission can do at this point. It would come to planning and zoning first, and they would make.
Can we do a look into it, you know, I would talk to.
Yep, I know that Bruce had sent it out to the members to, to look at, and so they'll, they'll work on it, but unfortunately, until something.
Until stuff, I just wanna get it stopped.
We do, well, the first step would be for you guys to make an official complaint to Casey in writing at City Hall. And from there, then, planning and zoning can take that as a, we'll move forward and go, go through that. Cause we're complaint based, so unless there's a complaint, or we don't, or it's not across, we can't do anything.
No, I've been, I've been touch and base every place I was told to touch, so.
And that's part of the reason we came here tonight, too, is for some extra guidance, like what do we need to do, what can be some next steps.
So it would be the the ninth, I believe, will be our, the ninth of June would be the planning and zoning day.
Ninth of June?
Yep.
We'll get that.
At five thirty.
Like I said, we're in contact with them, you, um, several other towns just asked questions. All right, thanks, guys.
Thank you very much, Joe.
Have you filed a complaint in the township?
Are they?
Have you filed a complaint in the township?
We can, we believe we have, we'll do a letter.
You know, a township.
No, it doesn't matter, it's still our good case.
Okay, so we'll do the, we'll do the.
All right.
Thank you. Thank you.
Anybody else would like to address? A reminder that Memorial Day is next Monday, and the three buildings and offices are closed. And then, starting after Memorial Day, the office hours change. Mondays through Thursdays are seven AM to four PM, except on Wednesday.
Four thirty PM?
Or four thirty PM, except on Wednesday, you close at one, and then Fridays are from seven to noon. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'd like, just real quick, I, I just kinda wanted to put a kudos out there, and thank you to the running club and all the organizations that were involved with the event on Saturday. It's events like that that help, help make our, put our community on the map, bring people to Hillsborough, uh, and show the use of, of what they use for our main street, for how things that in Railroad Park over here could potentially be used, but more so from the standpoint of economic development, and how that brings people into town. And that benefits, obviously, our businesses, benefits everybody, uh, you bring somebody in here to do a running event, they like the community, they may drive around. And I, and it's people like that that take the energy and the time to do those events, they're not easy to do, not, not just one person does it. So I wanna thank those groups, I know there's BioGrills, big into it, and the Running Club, I don't know who else, Dara, I know there's kind of wanted to have people heading it up. But I just wanna publicly say thanks to the city of Hillsborough for doing those types of events that give more for local residents to do. I think it's fantastic, I don't think we can have enough.
Yeah, thanks for breaking up the sidewalks, it's better than my stick finger chalk drawings.
Thank you, Paul. Anything else?
Drop in, drop in, Paul.
Do, is there anything else? Otherwise, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Moved by Nicole, seconded by John. All those in favor say aye. If yours opposed, motion carries, the meeting is adjourned.
See you, Jason.
See you, Jason.